Hi, we must be about Kokomo, huh? Well, he'll be approaching Nobordale soon.
Um, well, we're about to start at seven o'clock and the council president is giving me a dirty look, so...
I am not! Who are you talking to?
Yeah, I... yeah.
Okay, John Boardy, you're out of work.
Yeah, okay, I'll call after. All right, love you, bye.
Who are you yelling at?
Uh, Doc.
That's who I thought it was.
A little bit of bad luck.
What's that?
She's got growing bones, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's her condition.
Yeah, and, uh...
Jay!
She, uh, she's got a lot of crack in her, and I'm gonna lay it on her.
You're mad at me?
What's that?
Don't have time to get sick.
I don't either.
You got your... Kids all right? Kids all right? You not getting a little bit of them? Yeah, I was...
They'll put on that channel.
Oh, yeah?
I know, I, uh, yeah, so hopefully.
You got a minute? Yeah, do you know where our invoker is?
Yeah.
Is he here?
He's here.
All right, good. She's here for you?
Yeah.
Cool. John Boardy, you ready? Come on, say, one, two, three, quick Gavin. Well, we've been late all night, we'll be in the middle of it. Gavin, there he is. Get down, ready, jump Gavin, jump.
Oh, I didn't think I got my thing.
All right. Ready?
I'm looking really with the color tonight. Damn, I got on a shirt.
Good evening, the Monday, August 13th, 2018, common council meeting is now in session. Would you please stand? Our invocation is by the Reverend Linda Greer, Christian Center Church. Thank you for coming.
Thank you Mayor Buttigieg and council members for the invitation this evening. I'm honored to represent Christian Center Church, a congregation that is as diverse as the city of South Bend. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord, tonight, giving you thanks for all men, for all of the residents of South Bend, and those that work and play in this wonderful community. A city whose residents represent a diverse range of economic backgrounds, as well as a rich, a richness of ethnic traditions and experiences. We are thankful for these before us now, Lord, men and women who serve their communities selflessly and with honor, receiving their authority from you, for there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God. We ask now, Lord, for wisdom and guidance, for you who gives to all liberally and without reproach to all who but ask. We ask, Lord, that you guide and direct this council as they pursue their mission, making certain that our city government is always responsive to the needs of the residents, and that the betterment of South Bend is always their highest priority. May you be merciful to us, Lord, and bless us, and cause your face to shine upon us. Amen.
Amen, thank you. You may be seen, if you would, please turn your cell phones to silent. Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
Councilmember Preston?
Here.
Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Burden?
Here.
Councilmember Tenshaw?
Here.
Vice President Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Boardy?
Here.
Councilmember Furley?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Report on subcommittee amendments, please.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has respected the minutes of the July 23rd, 2018, meeting of the common council, and confident to be correct, therefore would recommend the same be approved.
Much to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. No special business at this time, report from city offices. Uh, this time we have a city update from Mayor Pete Buttigieg. Sir, thank you for coming.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the invitation, the opportunity to, uh, share, uh, a little bit with the council. In particular, I requested the opportunity to, um, use this evening's slot to address, uh, the future of the South Shore and the city's involvement and support, um, for a faster South Shore service between South Bend and Chicago. Um, as you recall, the last time we were here together able to discuss this in detail was May, when we shared the results of the professional economic analysis on a number of, uh, possible alternative locations for the South Shore train. Uh, there had been some, uh, investigation previously of an opportunity to, uh, reorient the train's approach to the, uh, South Bend International Airport, from the east side to the west side. Um, the economic analysis that was commissioned looked at several alternatives. Uh, a site co-located with the current Amtrak station, uh, a site close to the property of Honeywell, uh, a site currently under development, is a project, uh, by the South Bend Chocolate Company, uh, and a downtown site, um, located, uh, close to, uh, South Street, uh, the, uh, Four Winds Field and the South Bend, uh, Transport, uh, Central Station. So since, uh, that study came back, it gave us a sense, uh, in particular of the economic side of things, and the return on investments associated with the different costs. We've had the opportunity to evaluate, uh, the possibilities. Um, also, we've been trying to really use that time for healthy dialogue with, uh, different stakeholders who are involved. A lot of direct stakeholders, uh, and indirect stakeholders. Uh, among them, of course, are, uh, the South Shore itself, NICD, um, and, uh, the airport. Um, they're both here as well, and, uh, I hope they'll have an opportunity, uh, in a moment to share their views, but, uh, I'd like this opportunity to share mine and the administration's. Um, first of all, I think, to some extent, the numbers made it easy for certain options to fall away. Uh, so, uh, one example is the proposed chocolate factory site. Uh, while the city remains, uh, very enthusiastic about some of the potential and possibilities of that economic development as a whole, when we looked at the numbers, the case began to fall away for that to be a possibility for, uh, a future train station. Uh, similarly, if you looked at, uh, the, the cost benefit analysis, uh, it's really difficult to keep the proposed Amtrak site in the conversation. Um, other options looked more viable, and among those options, the city is especially excited about the possibility of restoring passenger train station, uh, train service downtown. According to the study, restoring service downtown presents the highest possibility for return on investment, uh, compared to the options that were evaluated. Um, the big surprise, at least from my perspective, was that the initial look also suggested that the travel time is about the same. Uh, this isn't really intuitive, uh, you would think that coming, uh, up to two miles further into town would take longer than stepping off on the west side, but because of the turns, the curves involved versus the comparatively straight shot into the heart of the city, um, it turns out that actually any of the options that were evaluated, um, could achieve roughly the same amount of travel time. Again, this is relative to what I would call the business as usual or no build scenario. Um, that's one in which the South Shore's, um, double tracking project, which we're very excited about, plays out as hoped for and is complete by 2020. Um, that brings the travel time to an hour and forty-two minutes, under a sort of business as usual scenario. The question is, what would it take to get those other twelve minutes to get to the, uh, hour and a half figure that many consider kind of a magic number for a step change, and people's willingness to use it as a, uh, regular commuting option? The other thing we've found out was that the cost, while significant, is not extreme, uh, by the standards of train stations, at least. Uh, so when you look at a hundred million dollar expense, uh, we're talking about a sum that is, uh, more than we had envisioned or appropriated. Uh, the original outlook that we presented to council was a twenty-five million dollar city contribution. But, if you consider the economic possibility, it's at least conceivable, um, that if you take what the city can assemble, what we can attract through federal funds, and if we're creative and committed, uh, it's possible to reach that level. But probably the most interesting thing about the, the downtown, uh, possibility is when you situate it in the trajectory of our city right now. Um, and, uh, in fact, you could argue that it only makes sense if you think about, uh, growth and trajectory rather than the current, uh, state of play frozen in time. But in looking at it, I've been reflecting on what we were talking about when we talked about downtown seven years ago. Um, the big debates, uh, in the first few years of this administration were whether the Chase Tower can possibly be saved or whether it should be torn down, um, what to do about vacancy in the LaSalle Hotel and the Hoffman Buildings, um, whether there was any possible future for the Studebaker Building south of the ballpark, whether anybody was gonna build on Ignition Park, uh, what to do about the deterioration of the JMS Building. And if you go back to the very beginning, if you go back seven years ago, uh, to 2011, the biggest debates that, that I sometimes have trouble believing were merely seven years ago, um, included whether it could possibly be worth investing another penny in Kowalski Stadium, whether anybody would come to the area around, uh, Kowalski Stadium where the Silverhawks were playing. And the other big debate was whether the opening of Eddy Street Commons meant the final demise of any possibility of a downtown dining scene. So, if you just think about the trajectory that we've traveled in the last seven years, the next question is, what would it look like seven years from now? Uh, which would take us to 2025? And what is possible by 2025 for the city? And how do we have the right kind of mobility and transportation arrangements to bring us into that reality? Um, I think it's compelling to envision by 2025, especially building upon the work for 2020 for double tracking in, uh, that, that we believe is very much on track, uh, taking place to our west in, in Michigan City. Um, that you could picture a world in 2025 where, let's say, a worker in one of our new tech companies, uh, is, uh, married to a faculty member who works in Chicago, and gets off the train, uh, and maybe goes to their home in one of the housing developments that's taking shape around Four Winds Field. Uh, or you have a, a young child living in public housing on Monroe Circle, uh, who is able to go with a school group to take advantage of the free museum day, uh, at the Field Museum or Museum of Science and Industry in Chicago, to take advantage of the educational opportunity. Well, really, anybody with enough money to get on a transport, uh, bus can get to one stop away from, uh, one of the global economic centers, uh, in our country today. It's a compelling picture, and so, uh, we're very excited about developing next steps to, uh, see if that picture can become a reality. Having painted that picture, I want to be candid about questions that remain as well. And some of those questions include, how confident can we be to that price tag? Because when you're talking about a hundred million dollars, uh, even a thirty percent variation could be enough to make or break the realism of this project. Another, and, and the one that, uh, I'm proposing that we, uh, take steps to answer concretely, uh, what are the engineering, the environmental, and the other physical needs that would surface as we move down the path from concept and, and economic, uh, dollars and cents to really mapping out, uh, the physical path to getting something like this done? Um, how quickly can it be done? What would it take to get it done in 2025, uh, or sooner? And would getting it done by that deadline materially change the cost? Are we confident it's the most equitable solution that's conducive to inclusive economic growth that we have been stating repeatedly as the governing, uh, force for the way we think about the economy and our policies around the economy? Um, some early indications exist based on the AECOM study and what those economists did, because they were able to do analyses of how many people under what economic conditions lived within a radius of the different areas that were being proposed. Uh, but this deserves a, a really thorough look, uh, if we're going to commit these kinds of once-in-a-generation resources to this. Um, another question is, how do we assemble the funding? So, uh, I, uh, am prepared to say to the common council that I believe this level of funding is conceivable, uh, but I'm not prepared to show you the line item roster of how we got that funding stacked up. Uh, another very important question is, is the big picture any different, uh, based on some other possibilities that have come to light? Um, I know there's some excitement about the possibility of, uh, freight, uh, air-to-freight, uh, possibilities around the airport, um, and we need to know if that changes the answer. But I think we know enough to do the work to answer some of those questions I've just posed. Um, we only get a shot at this once in a generation, and so, we need to get to the answers to these questions, uh, for the downtown option, even as we're answering the questions, um, that might change the right answer before a shovel goes in the ground, uh, whether we're talking about some of the other possibilities that are over the horizon at the airport, uh, or some of the other possibilities that were floated in the course of the study. Um, the other thing I want to emphasize is that I'm offering the city administration's perspective, but, uh, the city is not, uh, the owner, nor is it the sole decider in this case. The city is, uh, committed to putting major municipal resources toward making this happen. Uh, but the city is one partner, uh, among a group of partners. Uh, the Northern Indiana Community Transportation District, the South Shore, uh, that's the entity that actually, uh, has to decide, uh, and, uh, do the work. And so, we're ready to back, um, potentially with game-changing resources, certain outcomes. Um, but we can't go down a path that doesn't make sense, um, in the eyes of, uh, the people who do the day-in, day-out work at the South Shore. Um, the airport is a partner in this conversation right now. And there are a number of other community partners, including, in particular, uh, intergovernmental partners, all the way up to the federal government, uh, without whose support, uh, it's not obvious that we could find the funding to do this at all. Um, so, that's the city administration's perspective. We're excited about the possibilities, but we want to be honest, uh, about the questions that remain. And what we would like to do is begin down the path, not just to the economic, uh, work that's already been done, um, but the concrete engineering work that will inform the answers to those questions, uh, which we believe that we can get through the engagement, uh, of, uh, of professional services over the course of the coming months, so that we can get this right, um, even while other questions are being asked and answered around the community. Um, so, again, that's the perspective of the city, um, and, uh, I'd like to ask now that, uh, if the council would indulge, um, representation from the South Shore to share, uh, how the big picture looks from a South Shore perspective, uh, and then the airport, which obviously is a big stakeholder here as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Sir, if you would, state your name and address.
My name is Mike Nolan, I'm the president of the South Shoreline. Uh, I want to thank Mayor Buttigieg for, uh, the opening remarks, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here as part of the council, to talk about this exciting project. And I'd like to step back a bit, because it has been the goal of the South Shore for many, many years, to, uh, improve the service to South Bend. We moved into the east side of the airport in 1992 as a temporary measure. Um, we thought all along that that would be, uh, perhaps on the west side of this, of the airport, and there was actually a study done and considered twenty-some years ago to, to move to the west side. Uh, we know that the city now has a strong desire for us to go back downtown, uh, back to where we had originally started, uh, and served downtown South Bend many, many years ago. And, and we've had a lot of dialogue with the city on that. I've talked to my board members, and we support that goal as being part of the South Shore's vision. Uh, the, the question will be is, uh, when can that be achieved? But we're willing to work with the city on trying to make that a reality. The, the issue for us is, is does that, what does that do with the current evaluation? Um, and we started off with a, uh, environmental study about a year ago, where we were considering a number of potential options into the west side of the airport. Uh, and at the beginning of that such study, the city asked us to step back while there was some additional input that was, was received. As we said at the beginning of the study, what we wanted to achieve was stakeholder input. And so, we received, not only did we anticipate getting stakeholder input as part of our study, but as we backed off, we've, we have received through the process the city has gone through, a tremendous amount of input, and that's very important. The more input that we get, the better project that we're gonna have. So we have, we have seen some of the proposals that, that have come forth from the AECOM study, and we have great amount of respect for AECOM. We've used them on other projects as well, we know they're engineers, they know what they're talking about, these are sharp people. So, uh, while DLZ is our engineering firm, we've had them work with the, our engineers work with AECOM, and to validate the studies, and we're on the same page with the capital costs and the operating costs. So that isn't an issue with, uh, the, the result of the study. And we don't disagree with the mayor in that the, from our perspective, going back to the old Amtrak site is inferior, we wouldn't support it. Uh, going over to the, uh, chocolate factory, uh, doesn't seem to have the kind of benefits, and it is expensive. Uh, from, from our view, um, if we're going to, if, if we can get to the downtown, that's one issue, but we think we need to continue to explore other potential options to the west side of the airport. Now, having said that, early on in the study, we had eliminated a possible route into the airport that we had environmentally cleared about twelve years earlier. And that, and, and so we had done a study, environmental analysis, uh, with a different route, it's west of Mayfair. The reason we eliminated it about a year ago was three, three reasons. One, Lincoln Way got reconfigured, and there's a, there's a pretty, uh, uh, high-speed curve that we'd have to deal with. Second thing was, we built a, uh, we collectively built a roundabout where the railroad would be going right in the north end through to the roundabout. And the third thing was whether or not it could be accomplished with FAA regulations. In conversations with a lot of stakeholders, including the county and the airport, we believe that we may be able to solve for those issues, so we want to take a fresh look at that study as well, because we think long-term, being both at the airport and downtown makes sense. And so, we're not saying that we, if we could get to downtown in a very, uh, short timeframe, that's not something that we couldn't get ourselves behind, but we also want to leave open the potential that, that there is a second option, which is, we get to the west side of the airport, and we continue to work to get downtown. So, from the, from our perspective, there really are, uh, two options that we see as viable, one being downtown, and the other one being to the west side of the airport. We don't think that the Honeywell site makes a lot of sense, because one, it adds a lot of operating cost to us, and if it is our goal to get to downtown, once we get to downtown, that investment i- is no longer viable. We would never maintain a stop at Honeywell. If we can get, however, to the west side of the airport, and then we move downtown, we would maintain connection to the airport, just like Chicago has a people mover. And we could stop, we could stop at the airport, stop, drop people off, head into downtown Chicago, or downtown Chicago, or downtown South Bend, come back, and then we get a little two-car train shuttle back and forth into the airport, just like a people mover is to appear. We think that's effective, and we think it's a long-term, good use of a capital investment that you would not be able to say if you took that money and you built it Honeywell. So, from our perspective, I just wanted to say, we appreciate the partnership, we appreciate the input that we received, we received a lot of, uh, neighborhood input, we received a lot of input from the council, we've got it from the city, we've received it from the airport, and certainly from the county, and we want to be your partner. So, long-term, our goal is to get to ninety minutes, that is a game-changing number. Uh, I can tell you that, um, from a commuting standpoint, there are people who will commute at ninety minutes. Michigan City today is, on average, ninety, ninety-five minutes, and we have about four hundred people a day that go in and out of Chicago for what are higher-paying jobs. We just did a, a market study, our average household income for a South Shore rider is eighty-eight thousand dollars a year. It's significantly higher than the average household income for, uh, others in, in the entire region. So, our riders go into the city, Chicago, and they earn, on average, a forty percent wage premium that, that they would earn otherwise if they were working in the region, changes by, by occupation. But, our folks go into the city, they earn a higher wage, and they come back and spend that money here in, in, in northwest Indiana. So, I thank you for your time today, uh, Mr. Daigle, I think I'll turn it over to him next to talk about the airport's view, and then he'll be available to answer our questions.
Thank you. Mr. Daigle? Name and address, sir.
Absolutely, uh, Mike Daigle, Executive Director, South Bend International Airport, forty-four seventy-seven, Progress Drive, South Bend. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to speak with you, I would like to say my thanks to Mr. Mayor. Over the years, the city and the airport has always worked well together for the benefit of our residents and the citizens of our city and our region. Just a couple of years ago, we worked collectively together to reach an agreement that allowed a new company to come to the airport, create new jobs, do a substantial investment onto the property. In exchange, there was some land that was, um, deeded back to the city, or deeded to the city, that isn't going to be the future of South Bend Chocolate Site, and all the attractions that they're planning on bringing there. Uh, just a terrific, exciting opportunity to go in there. So as was mentioned, about twenty-five years or so, the rail was moved to the airport, supposedly for a temporary conframe. I think, by all measures, people would say this has been a successful endeavor. The opportu- opportunity before us is to determine what is the next best step. Passenger rail service, we believe, will continue to grow to serve our city and the region. If the service can be moved to the west side of the airport, the tracks can then do double duty. It can also be used then to do international cargo. The initial study has some items that were done in the economic assessment that was done that discounted much of the land that was around the airport, because it wouldn't be used for residential purposes. Uh, but it had other uses and other economic impact. The airport is now working with the county to develop what we call a comprehensive international cargo development plan. We also have a city representative who is with us, because we want to work collectively together to make sure that we're doing what's in the best region, best interest of our city and also our region. This plan, if it comes to fruition, can provide many new jobs for our region, and the economic development could be massive for us also. The two routes that were, uh, identified by, uh, the South Shore representative really shows opportunities to go through different access routes back to the airport. The rail that would be installed would then do double duty with both passenger service and cargo service. We would have the ability through rail then to reach cargo to anywhere in the United States. As initial evaluation shows, just today, we received, that the possible economic impact of the city and our region is in excess of four hundred million dollars a year. Now, this is preliminary information, we do need to study this more, we need to continue the plan that we're working collectively to accomplish. We think it's going to take us several months to finish that plan. We then need to have an, uh, an economic assessment done of that plan as we move forward. So, yes, more studying, more work needs to be looked at, um, but I'm going to tell you that we are prepared to go ahead and work partnerships and the groups that are involved to create new development, new economic opportunity, serve new customers, and also create new jobs for our region.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, any final comments?
Um, just again, I want to thank the, uh, South Shore and the airport both, especially, not only for the partnership, but for working through us with a number of changes as we've tried to really do two things. First of all, do the right thing when it comes to stakeholder engagement. Uh, and secondly, deal with the, the incredibly swift changes that are happening just in our economy and our community, uh, that might change the answer. Uh, we do feel like it's especially important to get this right when you think about, uh, nineteen ninety-two and the, the temporary solution that, that happened then. It's a reminder that, uh, there's gonna be a great value in it, and sure, we take... take the greatest advantage of this potentially once-in-a-generation opportunity to figure out how to get all of these pieces in the right way. I also meant to mention that the county's partnership has been indispensable throughout this process. I know Commissioner Costelli is taking time out of his day just in case there are any specific questions about the county perspective as we go on too. But you know, the bottom line for us is that we're very excited about the possibility to restore the common sense logic that trains are designed to go from one downtown area to another. And at the same time, we're mindful and want to be honest about the questions that remain as well as some of the possibilities that exist that were referred to earlier. So with that, I think any of the three of us will be available for questions from the council.
I'd like, probably with the time and everybody, I would like to do two, two questions each per council members. This subject, of course, means a larger committee meeting at a future date. So you know, just having this on the schedule doesn't do it justice like we should. But we'll take two questions, starting with the second district.
These are only questions, not comments.
One question, one comment. No.
What?
A total one.
Can we have a, given the fact that we have people here, can we have two questions and then come back around again if we have some more questions? Because I have a list of questions that I think would be helpful and not to have to wait for another month because my concern is that they've made all these plans and the council hasn't had any input in it already. And I am highly concerned that we will then be left out again. And the more we are left out, the more that they get a chance to plan. And so I am really tonight, I mean, I have my shoes off. I'm really waiting. I'm ready to sit here and ask questions of these gentlemen.
Right. Like you said though, I believe this is a single topic on a single night as well. So let's do the two questions.
With all due respect, we ask-
Oliver, with all due respect, me, I have it before, please.
I have not finished.
Yeah, you have. So what we'll do is go through our questions-
And then come back.
And then come back around and see where it leads to, okay?
I would appreciate that.
All right.
I still have a question for process for this. So we ask our questions. Do we, is the public getting any chance to speak at all?
No, this is just an update from council right now. Like I said, this is not a full-blown committee where we're making the decision and all that. This is an update from the council. A lot of this is new information. We need to digest and probably come back again.
We'd certainly welcome the drop of the news to discuss this.
So, two questions. One, what are your plans? Because I loved what you said about, you know, we need more, more input. We need more time. What kinds of plans you have in terms of engagement with community members? There hasn't been a lot in terms of, like I haven't even been part of this conversation. All three sites are in my district. So I'm looking for transparency and also I know that the people in my district, part of the district, want to have input. What are your thoughts on opportunities to have that soon?
So I think up until now, most of the best opportunities for input have been in this forum as concerned residents have come to the council to express their views. Part of what's been a challenge is that the options have been so diffuse, right? So how do you get healthy public engagement and honest city information sharing when there are five different possibilities that are floating around? I think now that we've narrowed it down to the city being prepared to lead the charge on evaluating downtown, the airport making the case for another possibility to remain in the mix as well, South Shore kind of continuing to bridge those possibilities. I think a couple of things will happen that will pave the way for input. First of all, we continue to welcome the council as a forum where as, if there's a committee meeting format is appropriate or some other way to pair that out, we certainly welcome that. The other thing that begins to happen as we move from a kind of economic question and answer project like what the bulk of the AECom study was, and more of the direct engineering and design outlook, is that you begin to approach the environmental process, which has a lot of preset features that require a certain level of opportunity for public comment and public input. That would also be naturally part of the process required of us if we receive federal funds, which again, it's not clear to me how we could do this without those. So those are some examples of how we think we can get some, some good structure for public feedback.
Okay, thank you. I'll yield my second question as long as I can have comments, please.
You go with your second question.
I can make it a comment later.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If it'll-
You can go now if you want.
Make a comment now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, awesome. So I want to thank you for recognizing, you know, you laid out several questions that still need to be answered. And I just wanted to underscore and highlight, you made the point about the issue of equity. We did have the racial, racial wealth divide report that we spent money, good money, to have this study done. And one of the recommendations out of this study was to every single economic development decision should be looked through the lens of equity. And it actually gave us 10 questions as a guideline for making those decisions. So I'm excited about the fact that you know, you recognize that we need to, in spite of all of the different things that happen in terms of the engineering and the cost benefits, but also putting that third element of equity into the conversation. So I look forward to being able to, in one of these public forums and/or maybe something written or a statement from you about how the city administration went through those questions based on those recommendations and what their answers to those questions were. So that is very much appreciated and we look forward to hearing from you. Thanks.
Ms. McBride?
I appreciate that, Mayor. And looking forward to the further development of the project. And I'll defer any questions or comments that I have at this time until our committee.
Thanks for the presentation. I'd like to actually specifically ask that my time allotment for the two questions be yielded to Councilmember Davis.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for painting that picture of what it would look like for the tracks to come downtown. It's a, it's a great picture. And again, thank you for painting it. That being said, I think right now, I feel awfully unprepared to make any sort of comments or ask any questions because we really don't have any information as far as what, you know, what it's going to cost, what it'd be, exactly what it looks like. And so I too will yield my time to Councilmember Davis.
See, you're gaining ground. I appreciate it. So, hang on. I'm going to do mine and just go down the line. Thank you, Mayor. One thing that I would like to see, I think is from Mike Daigle or the other gentleman, is, is that study on the airport, the industrial cargo. I've seen this kind of play out in St. Louis a little bit. I'd like to know more about the study that you were saying here with the $400 million impact that would have on that. That sits within the first district or around the first district. And you know, with the development of Port Jupair and that, I'm sure there's some relation to that. So if you guys have that study, Mike, I'd like to see that and try to understand what that is. Because I've seen that, you know, St. Louis, their airport used to be a hub. It's not anymore and they're trying to do the same type thing. I don't think it's really being successful in what they're doing, but I'd like to understand that impact. And with that, my only question, I will defer my single question to Oliver Davis as well.
I'll try to see and then if not, I'll get them all. How many times, Mr. May, able to come forth, please?
Mike Daigle.
Daigle. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Daigle. Thank you for coming tonight.
My pleasure.
Question for you. What has been, in terms of your boards, well, I know you've reached out to the county council for input, recognizing that the city council has to approve bonds to be able to take care of this. What has been your efforts to reach out to the South Bend Common Council?
For?
For input.
Anything?
So we can meet, have a talk?
Right.
What has been, what's been your effort to do that?
So to this point, I've not met with the county council.
No, city council.
I've not met with the county council to discuss this either. This plan that we're working on is in the initial stages. We think that the majority of it will be done by the end of the year, which would, I think, be able to answer some of those questions. Once we know what that looks like, once we get some additional work done, then we can do the economic analysis of that and then determine what a cost-benefit ratio could be. Once we know that, then there would be further discussion with the city council and the county councils.
So there was not been any talk with the county council on this at all? Any of the administration, talk on your plan?
No, by the airport, there has been none with the county council.
Okay, so is there any way that between now and December, I don't even want to get that far, within the next few weeks, can we set up a meeting with your group so we can do that? I would prefer that because what seems to happen is that everybody else does all the studies, all the analysis and everything else after that. And then they bring that to us on a Thursday. We just put a vote on it on Monday and that causes a problem. That's not fair. And so I would appreciate that you could work along with our president to have that because to my knowledge, we have not communicated.
That is correct, sir. We, we are just beginning this whole process to evaluate and take a look at. We've got a lot of due diligence to do to complete this plan, have some idea of what it looks like. Once we know more of these things, which could be in the next several weeks, I would be happy to be with anybody on the city council or-
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. I'd like to have Mr. Mike Nolan come forth, please.
Just so you don't want to defer to us in case you gain more.
Hi, Mr. Nolan. Thank you again for coming tonight. What has been in your role at NIKT and, with South Shore, sorry. What has been your role, I know you've been working with the mayor and that kind of thing, but what has been your role, your office's role in reaching out to the South Bend Common Council so we can have some clearer understanding and be in work to be on the same track?
Sure. I think we have to step back and look back about nine months ago, almost maybe a year, and remember that we were starting an environmental process to look at locations on the west side of the airport. And as the mayor said, as part of the environmental process, there is a tremendous amount of stakeholder input. We were asked to step back while the city looked at some other potential options. So we haven't, we didn't do the engagement that we have scheduled, that we would be mandated to do and that we would expect to do once we come to a better understanding of what the local direction is for us. So at this point in time, the stakeholder input that we have designed in the process got put on hold while the city studied multiple other options.
So in my understanding, you had a couple of options. You said that you want to either still use a west side option from the-
Well, I mentioned was we had originally, when we, when we started this process, we looked at one of the options that we thought that, and which is the option that we environmentally cleared about a decade ago.
And that's through Ardmore?
That's, it's west of Ardmore, west of, I may still technically call Ardmore in that area. It's west of the, of Mayflower. It was an area that got studied at a public process, I think in 2008, to get into the airport on the west side. We got funding for the study. We got the ECO environmental analysis approved, but we didn't have funding to construct the project. When we came back around this time, there were a number of changes that we thought would preclude that. And so initially, we didn't take a look at it. We think it's got a, it's viable again and it has less disruption. So we would put it back on the, on the plate. Once we get, once we start the environmental process, we expect to be engaged with the community, with the council, with the city, with the airport, with, with the county as well. So-
Just there, like I just shared my other question. Within the next month, probably do our budget to get ready for 2019, can there be a time when you can set up a time that you can come talk to the council, please?
We'd love to do that.
I appreciate that. And my next in front of, these questions are for the attorney. When it comes down to bond issues, we had to approve the $25 million before the other process and we had done some research on that. Does the fact that the mayor share that this is, the administration's intention to go downtown, does, when does, in your, some of your legal opinion, when does that decision come before the council to deal with that? Does that opinion come before the council? Do we have any say-so in that regarding that? Or is his word right now, the final decision?
You would still have to approve the bond issue.
And so-
You still have the control of the budget.
So therefore, the idea that those of us who would still like to fund like a Honeywell site or another site on the west side to have development on that site, we could still put that up for that kind of thing. So that's, what's the issue?
Yes, you could. I mean, obviously, the administration and the other stakeholders would have to approve any final decision. But as far as the council wanting to control costs or look at other options based on cost, whether it's more or less, you're obviously unable to do that.
So my thing is this, then what would be, when will we weigh in on that? Since the mayor has already indicated that he would like to, wants to go and that, when would we as a council, do you have to work with their legal team for preparing documents that we have to vote on for that? When, when do we come into this play? That's what I'm saying.
It comes into play if, when they propose a budget, which they want you to approve for the bond. And you either approve it and they carry on with the decision they made or you don't approve it and then they come back and try and get another, another option before it-
Oliver, just a sidebar too. South Shore has to give their blessing and approve what they want to do.
So by the time, so again, is South Shore giving their blessings and everybody else giving their blessings and we're the last one to have to bless it? Like the food, I mean, so everybody, we're the last one to say amen before we eat?
Because the total monitor bond issue would be the last thing that's precedent and that's what you would have to prove, which is-
So there is an indication, is there any way, the only concern I have, and I see your point, sir, that we are typically the last one to say amen before we eat. But given the fact that they would have to done all these other studies to prepare for downtown and all these other locations, and then we come back and let's say we vote no, or we want to go somewhere else, then there would be, I have to almost restart this whole thing again from that standpoint.
That's correct.
So I'm just hoping that we can work out some other ways that we can submit those kind of ideas to, if I can, prior to that. So we won't be on the telly on a Thursday afternoon when we get everything else, have that public meeting for three hours and then make the decision.
And I think your request that they have meetings with you before the budget process would go a long way to accomplish.
Okay. My last thing, I don't know, and this is to the president. When you, and we had the, let's press that, the bill for the zoo.
Oh, yeah.
What was that?
The-
Sixty Ben Statt.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You, the president of the county council-
And Miss Walker.
And the president of Miss Walker organized the meeting for the three of y'all sitting in the middle. All the city council, county, city council first, city council for Miss Walker and county council. We had it all up here. And we had an open meeting where the public was able to come and discuss it. We didn't make any votes, but we were all able to-
Information gathering.
Information gathering. What I would love to see is if you, the, Mr. Nolan, I'm sorry, the gentleman's name from the-
Daigle.
Mr. Mayor, the three of y'all, I'm glad they come up here. The three of y'all representing your bodies, the NIKT, you can sit up there, Mr. Mayor, you sit up here, and all of us. And then all of our, your board, the airport board, the NIKT board, the, who else? All the boards. Sit up here. We line it all up. The audience can sit up here like they are out here tonight, orange shirt, blue shirt, whatever shirt. And sit up here and we can hear in one forum, this whole thing. Because what's happening is we're hearing from the mayor here, we're hearing from NIKT here, we're hearing from the airport there, we're hearing from the Scudderbug on Facebook and everything else, and we're hearing from this and hearing from this. It's hard. So if we all live in the same room, we all live in the same community, we all need the same transit, okay, we all can be in the same room and deal with this, then we can come up prior to all these studies going on. So you can know what we all, as a community, want to study. That's all I'm suggesting. If we can help lead that down with all these other gentlemen, and we can do that in this budget process so we know how to put in the 2019 budget process and not do that in the 2019 year while we all try to run for office. And now that becomes a political night ball. I'd rather do it now where we all can think straight.
Thank you. I'll hope to facilitate that. Your seven questions are up.
I appreciate it.
Well, he only used four.
Mr. Boardy?
I don't have any questions at this point. Well, I've got a lot of questions, depending on how you look at it. But ever since this came up, I'm trying to think what's best in my own mind. And it's certainly not a scientific approach. But I talked to Jeff Wright, head of the, head of the chamber, and I talked to Kevin Smith, who's doing development over here on the south end in a, in a high-tech area. And I've spoken to people who were concerned about the impact on residential areas. And talked to some developers I know too, trying to, again, unscientifically assess the potential economic impact. And it seems to me that the only proviso to compromise the downtown decision would be an ability to put the financial package together. And given that, I mean, that raises a lot of questions. But if that becomes a real option, I'm more than happy to support it downtown. But at the same time, I don't want to lose sight of west end development at, at the airport because I think that has maybe not- uh, at the airport, because I think that has, uh, maybe not as much symbolically bringing the train to downtown, but in terms of economic impact, the industrial potential of the northwest side from Blackthorne on out, uh, beyond the bypass, and, and even, uh, even taking into account what, uh, Shalhoub's trying to do in New Carlyle, I think it's, I think there's tremendous potential, uh, there for economic development, uh, in terms of freight. So I hope that that idea, uh, doesn't lose its gravitas either. Uh, but I'm more than, I'm happy with the way things are going at this point, uh, along with the promises to keep everybody, uh, in the loop, and, uh, if, to make that, uh, west end of the airport, uh, option, uh, really acceptable and should have the least possible impact on, uh, the residential sector too, and I'm sure there's a way to do that. Again, unscientifically, I looked at the map and thought, no, let's just put it here. Uh, but anyway, uh, yeah, so thank you for the presentation, and thank you, gentlemen, for coming and giving your side of it.
I'll just say thank you, the mayor, Mr. Nolan, Commissioner Castelmi, and Mr. Dagle for the presentation, taking your time, and certainly excited about the possibility of the downtown station. Thank you.
Can I have one more question?
You can.
Thank you. I'd like to take the mayor and the representatives from on the South Shore, whereas the airport. My first question is, I have two questions, but it's really one question. You had made, mentioned there that, that there is a need to have answers to a number of questions, and you shared some with us this evening. Could you start a list of those questions, as well as the responses as you're able to respond to those questions? Because I think it's important that we have that information, uh, as the council, but most importantly, our citizens as well.
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure to keep the council informed as the study gets scoped.
And also a list of the various studies that have been done, as it pertains to the South Shore, and also any upcoming studies that will be done, so that we can have a more comprehensive picture in terms of the questions, but also the studies, and see how all this information will help us to frame our, um, conversations, but as well as our decisions. I wanted to make sure I heard correctly, uh, I heard that there's two possibilities. From your perspective, from the city, the city is supporting having the, uh, South Shore come downtown. Then I heard another gentleman may have mentioned that we still need to look at the west side of the airport. Is that correct? Okay. And more studies and more work needs to be done. At a timeline, you know, what are we looking at in terms of studies, the questions, but also the, uh, approving process? And who needs to make those decisions at, at what time? I have to be very honest, I'm trying to wrap my head around the cause. You know, if I heard correctly, at one time, we thought that the contribution was going to be $25 million, but now it's a possibility that it could be $100 million. And you know why, where I, where I'm going with this. Um, in terms of ensuring, I know that, um, economic impact, and you could share that as well, but again, we have to really ensure that all of our citizens are, are equal participants in the wealth creation, and our neighborhoods are as solid as they possibly can be. So I just want to share that, put that out there, and, uh, look forward to, uh, additional conversations. Uh, I think it's important that we have those, and that we, uh, be as, um, transparent as possible, because this is a very critical decision, uh, not only for the citizen, but for this region. And as someone had, um, made mention, that, um, it's one that's going to last probably past, uh, many of our lifetimes, so we want to done right. So, did I go over?
You're good.
You're good. You can continue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
President, back.
Hold on one. No, just want to say one more thing. I want to thank the presenters both. I want to say thank you to the neighbors as well for your participation, for keeping us informed, and for participating in these meetings. So thank you.
You want to take your question back? Go ahead. Well, two more. Regina in the rookie chair.
A clarified point. I heard, well, I didn't necessarily hear, but I want to clarify, because I, um, when Councilwoman White pointed out two sites, um, that were on the table, I would like to say, there are three sites. I would like to say that we have not yet made a decision to eliminate Honeywell site, as I feel like, just like we need to understand more the economic impact at the airport, and we need, need to understand more about the engineering impact downtown, we also need to, I believe, again, with that equity lens, understand the true economic impact that might come from being at the Honeywell site, and all the other factors that we don't even know, because we haven't engaged the, the residents in that area about what their needs are, what their wants are, what their vision is. Uh, there's a wisdom that's out there that we have not tapped, and we need to have that conversation. For example, and I mentioned this to you earlier, having a site there, or somewhere like in the Honeywell, that actually opens up access to several important economic corridors, including Western Avenue, because as that comes right close to Olive Street, Olive Street connects Western Avenue, which is booming with new development, and then of course the Lincoln Way corridor, which we are looking to be intentional about the type of development that happens there. And so I really want to really have a, a, a robust discussion about what that would mean for economic impact, and spreading that, uh, possibility, those opportunities, as Councilwoman White pointed out, to other parts of the community. So I would like to make sure that we haven't completely scratched off that Honeywell site. I don't think it's, it's, we can do that at this time, especially since we see all the orange shirts, and I know that there are a lot of gold shirts out there, there are a lot of other colored shirts out there that really want to be a part of that discussion.
Jake, your, your bonus question.
It's actually not a question, it's more of a comment. Uh, a new guy here, thank you. Uh, and I think fresh perspective is sometimes a good thing, and, um, I don't know what all of us were expecting from, from this presentation tonight, uh, because as, on our agenda just kind of says update here. And so I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I think your, your, uh, presentation aroused some frustration, and, uh, just again, as an outsider, I am one to think words matter. I think everybody in this building is guilty of it at some point. Uh, but what I've heard a lot since coming on board is, the city wants this and the council wants this. And I'm looking around and saying, aren't we the city? Right? Aren't these people out here the city? Uh, and so I think words matter, and so I think maybe, um, uh, I think what that does is sometimes create an adversarial relationship, and I don't want that. I don't think Oliver wants that, or President Scott wants that, and so, uh, I think, uh, we can all do a better job of talking more about we, and less about what you want versus what we want.
So, I'll just wrap up. Um, you know this group is not shy, which we saw tonight, uh, but there is more of a conversation, that's why I led off with, I, I, you know, we'll work with Vice President Davis on kind of that format of the next meeting for those open public discussions. I think, uh, there's a lot to talk about from here on out, so, uh, appreciate you guys all coming. Um, and I think we're in agreement with that part.
Thank you guys for the opportunity to...
Thank you, everybody. All right. Thank you all. So, with that, um, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and hear resolutions prior to committee of the whole.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. With that, we'll move to resolutions. Give it like two seconds, Green on. Okay, if you would, please give a reading to 1834.
1834. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the area board of zoning and bills for the property zoning area at 1719 to 1721, West Wrex.
Thank you, sir. Committee report. The zoning authorization committee met, and we bring this with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, sir. Is there a presenter?
Good evening. Angela Smith from the area planning commission with offices located on the 11th floor of this building. Before you this evening is a portion of a project that's looking at a housing development along Portage Avenue. Um, the majority of the project is zone MU mixed-use district. There are two lots, um, on Wrex Street, however, is a single-family district. Um, within that district, they would like to seek a special exception use to allow those two lots as a parking lot for the larger project. This will help retain the underlying zoning district for the lot, and help support the project's development moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions right now for the presenter? No. Uh, is there a petitioner? If they please come forward and give a brief update to what's going on here.
Sure. My name is Kathy Schuth, uh, from the near northwest neighborhood, and offices are at 1007 Portage Avenue. Uh, this is a project that has been a long time coming, and it's a, a true partnership between county, city, and neighborhood investors in the near northwest neighborhood. And we've been trying to get this through to, to receive state-level low-income housing tax credits. This is our sixth attempt at doing so, and we feel like we've really created a, a great project here. What, what the specific ask for is for specialty use on two residential properties that would become parking lot area, and that's kind of right in the middle of that plan that you see on, on the screen. What we're hoping to do, of course, is move ahead with the project. It would be, uh, a combination between two buildings of 76 low-income apartment units. Majority of that would be in the building on the left, which is a, with previous Ford Bakery building, which has been vacant and abandoned for nine years, and frankly, poorly maintained for a period of years prior to that. Uh, most of the roof structure on that building is gone, however, the street facade remains pretty decent. So it's a, it's a blighted structure in the neighborhood, and we've not discovered, um, other beneficial ways of moving forward with it due to the cost of rehab on that project. We partnered with the city to, uh, enter an agreement to utilize vacant land to the south, and we'd be proposing a three-story new construction building on that property. The, the parking that we're proposing on the two Wrex properties, uh, is not required by this project, however, we think it would be a true benefit to the project, bringing the allowable parking to about approximately one and a half spaces per apartment unit, and we think that's appropriate for this size and in an urban environment. The reason why we didn't go for rezoning is that we don't, if this project fails, we don't want this to become a commercial-type property or mixed-use property. We'd like it to revert to a residential use. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions from council?
Yes.
Vice President Davis.
Are there any other letters of support, or things we need to do, um, to help, or you need to do to help put this to a package? Because, you know, we've had challenges in the past. What, what just comes to your mind that really could, we could add, that would really spice this up, that gives us a even a better chance to win? Which, which something, you have some your thoughts on this?
I'm glad you would ask that. I would say, timing-wise, we've actually put in the application, so it would be difficult to add anything to the application at this point. Um, Tim Scott has been able to, to offer support, the mayor has offered, offered support, and actually, we've received report from both Senator Donnelly's office, Representative Walorsky's office, and State Senator David Scottsy. So we've been able to receive support at all levels, which is, which is really helpful. I will say one thing I think that would really make this shine, and something for us to consider, all of us in the future, is if there's a potential of making like a transportation hub at this site. There's a bus stop already. Uh, that's the sort of place where we'd love to see a covered bus stop, and to bring that kind of, um, since we're adding some more density to that, that area, that that could be, especially with the NNN offices across the street, that this really becomes, becomes a hub.
Is it too late to get, um, I guess, is the fact, is it, is it, is it too late to get a letter from the transport?
At this point, it would be unfortunately to add to the application.
Okay, but just in case, you know, hopefully we don't have to come back to you there, but, you know, this...
I hope to be bringing out a new project.
Yeah, but if you do, then just think about the traffic part of it, and we can get your letter.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor, 1834, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1834, please come to the podium. Seeing none, back to council.
Listen to, um...
Adopt.
Second.
Miss Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Roman?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschman?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Roman?
Aye.
Sorry.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Uh, 1836, please.
1836. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend and adopting a grievance complaint and establishing a voluntary provision of services to an annexation area in German Township, South Bend, Chocolate Annexation Area.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes. Um, the committee brings this to you from the zoning authorization committee with a favorable recommendation. Um, can we also hear?
No. The other one's a bill.
Oh, the other one's a bill. Okay, we're not going to hear that one tonight, all right?
No, we are. We're doing...
I got you, sir.
We're going to do this happily.
Okay, that's fine.
Is there a presenter?
Good evening. Michael DeVita, uh, planning the grant for community investment offices on the 14th floor of this building. Uh, so this fiscal plan for a 13.2 acre annexation, uh, requested by the property owner of, uh, four properties along Lincoln Way West, near Olive Road, west of the bypass. Uh, as we've discussed, the annexation area is a small portion of the overall South Bend Chocolate, uh, project area proposed, uh, to have the new South Bend Chocolate factory and other commercial, industrial, and agricultural uses. So know what capital improvements are planned by the city as part of this annexation. Water is, uh, already available along both US 20 and Pine Road. City's previously, uh, committed to extending sewer to this area, uh, as well, and the adjacent portion of US 20 will continue to be maintained by indot. So the annexation area will be added to the common council's first district, and will be served by police beat 24, fire station 11, which is on Vennix Drive, emergency medic four, and code enforcement area eight, with these and other, uh, non-capital services in place within one year, uh, following the effective data annexation, with response times comparable to other areas of the city. So I would then ask for the council's adoption of the fiscal plan, but we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeVita. Are there any questions?
Do we need to hear Mr. President from Mr. Bryan on this one, or are you good all by yourself?
It's under my orders.
Okay, so...
He's on the other one. All right, do you know? Any other questions? No? Thank you, Mr. DeVita. We'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1836, please, um, yeah, 1836, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1836, please come to the podium. Turn it back to council.
Motion for the adoption of resolution 18-36.
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Roman?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschman?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Uh, 1837, please.
1837. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 12 US 31 Industrial Park Phase Two Economic Rapidization Area, the purposes of a four-year group farming tax rate for new LLCs.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to accept the sub.
Sub no.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes. Community investment met.
We send this forward with no recommendation just due to absence of a presenter, but we have one tonight.
Uh-huh. There is a presenter tonight. What is your name and address, sir?
President Scott. Do not let my sins reflect on the good project that I'm putting in front of me.
Actually, probably both of them.
You had a piece there earlier.
So Dan Buckenmeyer, Director Business Development, Department of Community Investments, fourteenth floor of this building, here to request the council approval for an economic revitalization area, also known as a tax abatement, for fifty-eight seventy West Carbon Mill Drive. Now, Carbon Mill, just to orient us, is basically just north of that fun intersection where Cleveland and Brick Road come together and Dillon Drive shoots straight up into Portage Prairie, so it's kind of the southern section, if you will, of the Portage Prairie development. And it's what is right now just a open field, a open grassland there. It's very exciting to see this sort of green field develop into a project where a company called Chambon &amp; Sons is looking to come in and build a new headquarters facility, about two million dollar investment in building, thirteen thousand five hundred square feet, split between office and warehouse space. They will be consolidating some out-of-town and in-town businesses into the single location. They're gonna relocate eighty-six local jobs that were not formally in South Bend and then create twenty-five new permanent full-time jobs within the next three years. And the salary range they are estimating on those jobs goes from thirty-five K to a hundred and ten K for the twenty-five positions they anticipate bringing into the city. It is a four-year phase-in abatement, so it goes a hundred percent in ninety, eighty, seventy over four years of the abatement. The estimated total of, well, the estimated total, again, these are estimates, but total taxes was going to be around one forty-four by our estimates, a hundred and forty-four thousand over that four years. We're looking at abating about a hundred and ten of that and they will still pay about thirty-four thousand in taxes over those four years and then ramp up to the full amount following that. Obviously, again, a great improvement over just a empty field at this point. I think that about wraps up what I have to say. Mr. Doolittle is here from the petitioner. If you have any questions for him or myself.
Yeah, well, Mr. Doolittle, come up, please give a brief statement. Your name and address, sir.
Asking me to make a brief statement?
Yes, sir.
Chambon &amp; Sons is currently located in Mishawaka.
Your name and address, though.
Oh, yes. Richard J. Doolittle, forty-one hundred Madison Lakes Parkway in Mishawaka, Indiana.
Thank you.
Chambon &amp; Sons is locally, is currently located in Mishawaka in South Bend and has operations throughout the north, northern part of the state and they're consolidating their operations into US thirty-one Industrial Park in South Bend, Indiana. They currently operate with approximately thirty-five employees in-house and about fifty-five, sixty employees outside in the field, all of which are union labor. The average, the average wage in-house is between thirty and a hundred and ten thousand dollars per and the external outside wages are all union wages. Any questions you might have, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you. We'll open up to the public. Anyone from public wishing to speak in favor of eighteen thirty-seven, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against eighteen thirty-seven, please come to the podium. Turn it back to council. Motion for adoption.
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Roman.
Aye.
Councilmember Teschke.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Roman.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Eighteen thirty-nine, please.
Eighteen thirty-nine. A resolution by the South Bend Common Council.
Two guys. Go ahead, sorry.
Calling on the United States President Donald Trump, Vice President Pence, and the Indiana Congressional Senatorial Delegation who represent our area to work with Honeywell to stop offshoring jobs and abandoning commitments made to retirees.
Thank you. Is there a presenter or presenters?
Did I talk about community?
Oh, yeah.
Want to talk about that?
Well, um, first committee report, I'm sorry.
Sure. The Community Relations Committee met today and brings this with no recommendation.
I understand this is a substitute, second sub.
Second sub.
Motion to execute the second substitution.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now go ahead with our presenters.
Thank you. My name is Regina Williams Preston. I live at eight-three-eight North Elmer Street. I'm proud to come before this committee and produce a resolution, proposal resolution, along with my colleagues and they'll introduce themselves.
I'm Oliver Davis, eighteen oh one Nash Street, South Bend, Indiana, District Six. Glad to be here tonight.
Thank you. John Boardy, Large Councilman, ten-twenty-nine Claremont.
Sheriff McBride, four-fifteen Broadway Street, Third District, Council.
Thank you.
Tonight we bring a resolution by the South Bend Common Council calling on the United States President Donald Trump, Vice President Mike Pence, and the Indiana Congressional Senatorial Delegation who represent our area to work with Honeywell to stop offshoring jobs and abandoning commitments made to retirees.
Whereas the Honorable United States President Donald Trump encouraged federal contractors to stop offshoring jobs and to fulfill their commitment to retirees and whereas Vice President Pence, as a former governor and a native son of the state of Indiana, has particularly awareness and commitment to honoring commitments to and securing good jobs for these families and whereas our United States Congressional Senatorial Delegation who will represent our Indiana area are the Honorable United States Congresswoman Jackie Awalorski, the Honorable United States Senator Joseph S. Donnelly Senior, and the Honorable United States Senator Todd C. Young and...
Whereas Honeywell is a corporation with deep roots and a long history as a valued employer in our community and whereas Honeywell, a defense contractor that has received three-point-four billion dollars in federal contracts from the Trump administration, is working from the South Bend plant, is shipping work from the South Bend plant to Turkey, which runs counter to President Trump's commitment to keep jobs in the United States and whereas Honeywell has elected to end its longstanding commitment to provide health care coverage to forty-seven hundred retirees from this facility and...
Whereas these most recent actions come after Honeywell forced its workforce onto the street in a ten-month lockout in two thousand sixteen-seventeen and whereas Honeywell collected one-point-seven billion dollars in two thousand seventeen profit and takes advantage of the new tax law to bring back seven billion dollars in offshore cash. It is our hope that true to its history as a good corporate citizen, Honeywell will always consider people over profit and whereas Honeywell, while eliminating promised health care coverage to its retirees, deployed nearly nine-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in the first quarter for stock buybacks to boost shareholder profit instead of making good on its commitment to its retirees' health care. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section one, the South Bend Common Council respectfully requests that Representative Walorski, Senator Donnelly, Senator Young, and Vice President Mike Pence call on President Trump to exercise his power and influence to encourage federal contractor Honeywell to, one, stop offshoring the South Bend area jobs and, two, live up to its obligation to its employees past and current, particularly in regard to health care benefits. Section two, the South Bend Common Council additionally asks that in consideration of future contracts and contract renewals, President Trump take into consideration the actions of Honeywell with respect to its commitments to the people of our community. This resolution shall be enacted upon the passage of the South Bend Common Council and signed by the mayor of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions for the presenters? No, seeing none? Um, this'll be easy. We'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of eighteen thirty-nine, please come to the podium. State your name and address. You have five minutes per person. Gavin Furlik will give you a time. You ready?
My name is Senator Brown. I'm in favor of the council doing everything they can to help these people, of this Honeywell. I worked on a job for thirty-seven years. I've been on a year-long strike. I know how big companies operate. I was working for a Fortune five-hundred, Fortune five-hundred company, stayed out a year and went back to work for a penny more than with the offers. These people been in enough stress now and making money to health care. I don't think it's fair. They need support and you are the leaders of our community. Whether what we can do as a community to stand behind these people and help them, please organize our community in their self. We got some heavy hitters. We got Forty-Five, we got Pence, Walorski. They don't care. They deal with big business. And we, the little people, gotta organize and fight Forty-Five, Pence, John R. And I hope as a community you guys will organize us. Whatever we need to do, to help these people. They're wrong, they do their main, they're making big money and we are little people. So we gotta organize and we gotta do what it takes to fight these big giants. We got a president, which is named Forty-Five, he don't care. Pence, he don't care. Walorski, she don't care. So I pray that we, as a community, will organize and fight the big giants. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Thomas Ellis Meisel, senior, fifty-one oh forty-two Curry, D.O.A., South Bend, Chairman of UAW Local Nine Retirees. I was speaking in favor of this ordinance, of this resolution and I highly appreciate on behalf of the retirees of Local Nine that this, you've made this effort to help us in this regard and make it known to Honeywell how you feel in regard to how they treat the people in regard to throwing the people under the bus in the lockout of the South Bend plant and the loss possibly of jobs and the loss of health care retiree insurance. I would only hope, and I want to thank you for your effort, if you do pass this resolution, I hope you do, I will thank you very much for your effort. I would hope that we would get this kind of cooperation out of our other, our senators and our Congresswoman. Senator Donnelly has spoke in favor of trying to help us. He's been in front of the Senate and I think he enforces committee in regard to trying to stop them jobs from being taken to Turkey. I would just hope that Congressman Walorski would help us in this regard. She's highly close to the President of the United States and I would hope that she would be able to take this resolution. We intend on making this resolution go forward and push it as far as we can. I've heard the media say today that this is, this is the last attempt. This is just a beginning of the attempts for us to do something about this situation in this country with the loss of jobs and the loss of insurance for retirees and other benefits in this country. You know, this is supposed to be, we were supposed to be looking at administration that made this America first and it was supposed to be making America better. Certainly what's happened to Honeywell employees in the last year has not made America better. And I just want to thank you and I hope you pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next name and address.
My name is Larry Alexander. I reside at five-six oh-five-one Harmon Drive, Mishawaka, Indiana, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you folks for listening to us and to start off, I want to put something perfectly clear right now. The news media had it out there today that this is the last-ditch attempt for us retirees that were thrown under the bus for profit and profit only. And I have forty-seven hundred fellow retirees. I put thirty-seven years out there, did my job, upheld my end, and all we did is thrown under the bus. Not even a thank you. And on top of that, there's an old saying that John Belushi in Amwell House, "This isn't over until we say it's over." And you can take that to the bank. Also, our message is getting out to the communities, not only in St. Joe County, but it's getting over to LaPorte, Elkhart County, Marshall County. We're not giving up on this. We have every damn dime that we got coming and now I'm forced to take four to five thousand dollars of my retirement to buy health care insurance that I was promised when I hired in there. And that money could be well spent in this community a hell of a lot better than giving it to an insurance company that we shouldn't have to be paying to. And sorry for blowing up, but that's just the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, sir.
Marty Wolfson, eight oh nine Clark Avenue. I just want to make three brief points. First is the harm that Honeywell is doing not only to its workers but to the whole Indiana community. The second, the relationship of these actions to the distribution of income and wealth. And third, how we should regard Honeywell's request for tax assistance in the future, if there should be some. First, the workers at Honeywell used to be treated well by the company, but now Honeywell has turned its back on them. Locking out workers for ten months, laying off workers by outsourcing jobs to Turkey, refusing to honor its commitment to repay, to pay retiree health coverage. This hurts not only the workers but all of us. It undermines the economic vitality of our area. Workers who are locked out or without jobs or without money to pay health benefits, they can't afford to buy what they need and they can't patronize local businesses the way they used to. And our local economy suffers. Second, the actions by Honeywell and other companies that value profits over the living standards and even the health of their workers have led, have contributed to the most unequal distribution of income and wealth in this country since the nineteen twenties. It's not been because workers did not work hard and it's not because they're not productive. It's because profit has become much more important than the workers' living standards and health. And finally, South Bend in the past has treated Honeywell very generously. The company received a ten-year tax abatement in two thousand and one, which was made reactive, retroactive to nineteen ninety-seven. When the, as a special favor to Honeywell, which inadvertently, it said, forgot to apply for the abatement in nineteen ninety-seven when the structure receiving the abatement was built according to the tax abatement ordinance of South Bend. So should South Bend be as generous to Honeywell if it applies for tax incentives in the future? That should depend on whether Honeywell is a good corporate citizen. And hopefully it will change, but judging by its current behavior, that answer is a resounding no.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box ten-two-oh-five, South Bend, Indiana. I mean, this, this whole situation started some time ago. I remember going out and talking to a lot of the workers that were locked out in the freezing cold and the snow and we had our police departments there telling them, "Hey, you can't have these fires in these trash cans and move your tents off the sidewalk." So these people are paid a price, not only financially but emotionally. It has put some type of a drain even on our resources. This isn't the first company in our community that's done this. Look at the Unoral Planters, so many people I've forgotten about. My great-grandfather, my grandparents all worked there. I got famous red ball shoes for Christmas every year. But guess what? When that company went out, not only did a lot of the retirees, for lack of a better words, get screwed, they're still fighting for, for what belongs to them. Then the city got strapped with Tarnet, big monstrous place down. Then we got strapped with cleaning up the environmental mess when it was done. We've really gotta take close attention to what we're doing when we're doling out the tax abatements and a lot of times throwing around TIF money to help places and, you know, our government's bailed a lot of places out. These, these big corporations, all these people that are sitting here, they're numbers to them, man. They're just numbers to them. And it's really sad that these people were locked out for so long and it had such a huge impact and now that they finally don't have to watch buses of employees being brought in somewhere else and they're able, some of them able to go back to work, some of them are retired, now they have to sit here and fight again for something else. So I'm really glad that the council is bringing this resolution forward. I hope it doesn't just stop tonight with the purgative of the resolution. I hope the council continues to watch this and do whatever you can to make this company realize, man, our community has done a lot for them and they need to stand up and do what's right for these people.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Hello. Ron Packer, one-twenty-two East Pocahonton Street, South Bend. I like this resolution, but I would also like to see the council investigate and take action on other, for lack of a better term, punitive measures. I know that clawback laws, clawback is against the law here in the state of Indiana. I question its constitutionality. I would like to see the council do whatever is on the books that is legal and if possible, push the envelope to the willingness to go to a federal court in order to defend our residents who have worked all their lives, you know, and are now getting shafted by their former employer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come into podium. Seeing none, turn it back to council.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Teszka.
Let me just begin by saying, okay? It's just, I put it out there. Oh, my goodness.
Point order.
All right. We'll let the rookie have this one. Discussion after the...
Yeah, so we kind of moved fast. He needed to have his time for discussion. Did you want to... Yeah, we send the motion. We send the motion, please.
We send the motion, is that the proper procedure?
Second discussion.
Send the motion.
Second, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Now, back to council portion only, are there any comments?
Rookie mistake.
It's okay.
I was moving fast. You're moving fast.
Sorry.
I'd just like to start by saying that my grandfather worked for Bendix for forty-plus years, and part of that longevity was undoubtedly due to the fact that he came from a different era and a different economy where people, most folks worked for maybe a handful of companies throughout their entire lives, right? But part of that, a large part of that is, no question in my mind, due to the fact that he worked for a company that he felt not only had his back, but had his family's back. And after my grandfather passed in two thousand and four, my grandmother was able to continue to benefit from, from the promises that were made to my grandfather until her death in two thousand and sixteen. With that being said, this vote presented to me some philosophical challenges. We have federal court rulings now that say that Honeywell does not have the responsibility to continue to abide by the promises that they inherited, and that stinks. Just like it stunk when my dad, who's a retired Teamster, had his pension cut in half, while the CEO that he invested twenty years of his life with in that company took millions in bonuses, right? It stinks, but it's not fair. But in my belief, our federal government isn't created, wasn't created for, to ensure the fairness of contracts, right? Just to ensure that they are rightfully administered. And our federal courts are saying that this one was. However, inasmuch that this resolution is encouraging our federal elected officials, as I read it, and I have read it over and over again, right? And that it's not asking for a mandate or a directive, rather it's encouraging our federal elected officials to vote with our collective checkbooks next time it looks to put out a defense contract. I would certainly encourage our officials to do that, and to remember what's happening here, and to look to Honeywell's choices, whether it's offshoring jobs to Turkey, or the way that they're treating the folks who have invested so much of their lives with the company. With regards to the profits that the company's made, I'm a free-market guy, I'm all for profits, right? But not at the expense of people, not profits over people. And so I would implore Honeywell to put people over profits, and recognize that though it's given much to this community, this community has given much to it as well. And that's it, I'm done. So we can...
Motion. No, I want to... Go ahead. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Teszka for his comments tonight. I think it was, it's important for us to send a bipartisan message regarding this situation, because there are people who are in this audience who got hurt, who are Democrats, there are people who got hurt with this, who are Republicans, black, white, male, female, Hispanic, everybody. So, this, this kind of a situation cuts across all boards, and I'm glad that we, we really worked hard to try to find some language here and some actions that we all can present, because it's important, even adding in Vice President Pence's name, I, we totally, I mean, when we were doing it, we needed to add that, because he's a son of Indiana, and we need to make sure that he understands that, yes, he's in D.C., but he gotta come home, and we need to take care of everything. And we need his voice to be in this, along with our Congresswoman, along with our citizens, everybody has to be at the table on this one. And so, because when hurt has no party, hurt cuts across all, hurt is bipartisan, hunger is bipartisan, and, you know, therefore, we have to make sure that as a council, that we take care of all needs regarding this matter, and to have your retirement cut like that, I don't even know when I'm gonna get to retirement, and Lord have mercy, we got another thirty years, they probably moved to retirement age of eighty by then, but, you know, the bottom line, whatever it is, I need to get what I'm earned, and not be it taken away, especially at the most crucial times. And that's one of the reasons why I'm glad to have come out there, to supported you throughout this whole process, because I believe in it.
I'll make my final comments, and then we'll go to motion. Family members are in the painters union, the carpenters union, UAW, all, all from St. Louis, by the way. Teamsters, where my dad was a beer brewer, and my father-in-law was, who's deceased now, and my father, was a pipe fitter, or roder and pipe fitter with Monsanto. So, there were two contrasts to that, and that's why I'm supportive of this, I appreciate Jake's comments as well, is my father-in-law with Monsanto, all his benefits, he had benefits for life, and they got taken away by Solusia, and wherever they are now. And my eighty-nine-year-old mother-in-law still worries about all that, so I understand what you guys are going through. My dad, on the other hand, was a Teamster at Anheuser-Busch, he was a beer brewer, and part of beer brewing was a Teamster's unit, or Teamsters Union. He went through two bouts of cancer and died of cancer in two thousand and ten, he paid eight dollars out of his pocket at the end of the day, everything. So, I've seen both sides of this, and it always brings up the phrase, do what, say what you do and do what you say. Do what you do and say what you do. And, and that's absolutely it, and everybody who gives into it, and Jake, you hit it on the head, I've heard so many families that do that, they commit it, they've given in. My, my brother-in-law works for Dow, and it's like one of the last jobs, that is a, a job for life with a pension, which is a very rare, rare thing. And you guys worked hard for it, you did your part to it, and the companies do, need to do their part, and it's gotta be responsible. There's no problem with profit, it's responsibility that goes along with that, and that's what we think about.
I know you had it, I know you had it, I got one more real quick thing. We can't forget to thank the retirees themselves, and the labor unions, and the folks in the community who really stepped up, and who've been working ongoing with your city officials, your elected officials. This is how we get things done, it's a beautiful example, you entrusted us to fight your fight, and we're here to do that. So I want to thank you for trusting us to do that, and thank everyone, because it really has been an opportunity for us to really kind of reach across lines and work together to get something that we can all get behind and support. So, yes, you're right, it's fighting and over till you say it's over. That's it.
Go ahead. Motion. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Teszka.
Aye. Aye, aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Burley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Root.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye. Nine aye.
Nine aye. Thank you. All right. Okay. With that, we'll move back to entertaining motion during the committee of the whole. Second. All in favor? All opposed? Pass that down to Gavin.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition. Your comments will be limited to five minutes per ordinance. City Clerk, would you please read twenty-six eighteen?
Twenty-six eighteen. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, annex, annexing to room within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in German Township, contiguous therewith, Council District Number One, or two-four-six-three-two, two-four-six-ten-two, two-four-seven-zero-zero, two-four-seven-six-two, two-four-eight-one-zero, two-four-eight-two-zero, US Highway twenty and five-four-two-seven-zero, Pine Road, South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report, please?
Yes. Zoning annexation committee met, and we bring this to you as a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Good evening. Angela Smith in the Area Plan Commission, the office is located on the eleventh floor of this building. The petition before you this evening is a combined ordinance requesting a annexation and a rezoning for the property highlighted here in red. The annexation actually extends across Lincoln Way, because state law requires the entire right-of-way to be incorporated, it essentially goes due north of the, the northwest corner that you see there. Pine Road has already been annexed in a previous annexation by the council a few years ago. Currently, the property is a mixture of white industrial in the city, and then M manufacturing and C commercial in the county. As you'll see here, the surrounding properties are within the county, we have a mixture of R, Sims Family District and M manufacturing around the property. The site is a, is a large project that takes up and encompasses the intersection there at the bypass in Lincoln Way, and as we heard earlier this evening, a lot of people seem to be really excited about the wide variety of uses. Well, PUDs aren't usually a format we use, the combination of uses here is not something that can be found in any single zoning district. So this is looking south at the project area, at the area which would be the future main interest to the site, and then at the site from Pine Road. The project incorporates, the PUD has two main districts, the core district and the agricultural district. The core is intended to have a characteristic of an old-world village, with uses such as the chocolate factory, a dinosaur museum, restaurants, retails, and, and other kinds of commercial activity. The agricultural district is intended to highlight the natural and agricultural amenities, and may include such things as vineyards, buffalo paddocks, petting barns, tobogganing hills, and, and other attractions that may be a part of the larger vision for the development. There are some existing written commitments on the property that have to do with a traffic study, which is common for a project of this size. This comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation, utilizing the planning of development will allow for a large mixture of uses of this site in a development that will generate a lot of attraction to the city of South Bend. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Is there a petitioner, please?
Good evening. My name is Brian McMorrow with Aben Marsh Consultants, seven-fifty Lincoln Way East here in South Bend. We were retained by SBCC Development Corp., the South Bend Chocolate Company entity set up for real estate development, Mark Tarnor, and, and Mark has big plans and big visions for this eighty-acre piece of property. South Bend isn't big enough in its current configuration, so we need to annex in about thirteen more acres to make it happen, but we are very excited about the possibility of an entertainment, educational type of destination for residents here in the city and for people near and far. It's been a pleasure to work with the community investment, city planners, the staff at Area Plan, and Con Construction is here as well, and Mark, to craft an ordinance to take the vision that was in his, his head and his heart, and try to codify it, to provide some structure for future development, but not make it so rigid that it thwarts creativity and allow for a more natural evolution of a project. So we ask for your support.
Thank you. Are there any questions for presenter or petitioner at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, back to the council, what's your pleasure?
Move that bill twenty-six dash eighteen, we send to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City Clerk, would you please read thirty-three eighteen?
Thirty-three eighteen. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, amending the zoning ordinance and establishing historical landmark status for the structure of real property known as the Civil Rights Heritage Center, formerly the Engleman Nadorium, and located at ten-forty West Washington Street in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a presenter? I'm sorry, is there a committee report?
Yes. Zoning annexation committee met, and we bring this to you as a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Hello, Adam Torrey, Historic Preservation Specialist, Department of Community Investment, Staff of Historic Preservation Commission, fourteenth floor of this building. I will be joined by two other individuals in our presentation today. That's Darrell Heller, who is the Director of the South, pardon me, Indiana University of South Bend Civil Rights Heritage Center, and then also my friend George Garner, who is the curator for that institution as well. I'm here to present to you a landmark for the Civil Rights Heritage Center, which is the Engleman Nadorium. The structure was built in nineteen twenty-two, and is a neoclassical design building by Walter W. Schneider, who is a local architect. It sits just beyond the West Washington National Register Historic District, so it is beyond that boundary. Landmarking was previously investigated by the commission, as well as the community, in the late nineteen nineties, and then again revisited in, I think I have paperwork from two thousand and three. It was not pursued at that time. The current owner, South Bend Heritage Foundation, supports this, they have presented us a letter of owner consent, and they are committed to actively preserving and protecting the historic fabric of our community. Local landmark designation, local landmarks are sold and bought regularly, so that is not an impediment to the process of the structure or the future use of the structure, and again, South Bend Heritage is on board. So, with that, I'll turn it over to my co-workers here, friends.
Thank you. And the other presenters, I know your names are on the record, but please also state your addresses.
Absolutely. My name is George Garner, I live at one-one-two Franklin Place in South Bend, and I serve professionally as the curator for the IU South Bend Civil Rights Heritage Center. It's hard to underestimate the importance of the former Engleman Public Nadorium in the historic record of the city of South Bend. Between nineteen twenty-two and nineteen thirty-six, those who were allowed to come into the building did so by passing under the word "public," carved into the concrete at the front of the building. In spite of the fact that African-Americans had always been in the city, and at this time were moving into the city in record numbers, between nineteen twenty-two and nineteen thirty-six, the Nadorium's caretakers, all of whom were white, denied entry to African-Americans. As a city owned and operated as supposedly public pool, this became one of several places of activity where we, as a city, began choosing what kind of a city we want to be. Are we one that wishes to believe that word "public" is one that includes every human being? Or are we one that believes it's okay for some to selectively determine who that word "public" gets ascribed to? Leaders in the city, both white and of color, chose to work together and risk their livelihoods to make South Bend a place where that word "public" is ascribed to all human beings. Today, reborn as the home of the Indiana University of South Bend Civil Rights Heritage Center, an educational institution dedicated to the study and preservation of the history of civil rights and the experiences of marginalized and oppressed peoples in the city, we have no immediate threats of the building being lost. Still, we believe that the former Nadorium's role in the history of the city is one that must be protected. Before IU South Bend came into the picture, in nineteen ninety-nine, the city of South Bend set aside funds to study the feasibility of the Nadorium's demolition. Fortunately, we had neighbors and protectors, including some of the Historic Preservation Commission, who avoided its destruction. While I have zero expectation that that could or would ever happen again, I want to add layers of protection to help ensure that it won't. The history of the Nadorium is too pivotal, and need for its story today is too great for it to again be threatened. That is why I come here today to wholeheartedly endorse local landmark status for the Engleman Nadorium, a building that today we can truly say is public.
Thank you. Beautiful.
Darrell Heller, eight-thirty-five West Colfax. I am, I've had the honor and pleasure of being, serving as the Director of the IU South Bend Civil Rights Heritage Center for the last three years, three-plus years, and also the pleasure of seeing many of you come to events that we've, we've put on there. This building, which was once a space of exclusion and segregation, is now a place that's inclusive of everyone, and we can look at the history of the former Engleman Public Nadorium, that was a place where African-Americans couldn't walk through the front door at one time, much less enjoyed the public facility. Civil Rights Heritage Center for the last three years, three-plus years, and also the pleasure of seeing many of you come to events that we've put on there. This building, which was once a space of exclusion and segregation, is now a place that's inclusive of everyone. And we can look at the history of the former Engleman Public Nadorium that was a place where African-Americans couldn't walk through the front door at one time, much less enjoyed the public facility that it was, that it now serves as a community hub, a community hub to fight for and support the ongoing struggle for civil rights and social justice in the distance we still have yet to cover. And that's what we do. So I urge you, and I don't have much more to say about it, I think George gave you kind of our position, but I would urge you to the still landmark status on the Civil Rights Heritage Center as recognition that the past doesn't have to be our future. Thank you.
With that, are there any questions for presenters? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor?
Jason Minke Kritzlow, 38, 22 West Ford Street. I think this absolutely deserves historic landmark status. I think it's important to have these kind of symbolic landmarks just for that discussion because, you know, we get to a point in time in history where we kind of forget where we came from and where we've been and the struggle that existed. And we're getting to a point now dangerously where a lot of people associate Jim Crow with only the South, and we start to think that the North was exempt from that kind of behavior. So I think it's important to have that landmark that says, look, you know, we've come a long way, we're not where we need to be, but don't ever think that it was just different up North just because the history books tell you otherwise. So I wholeheartedly endorse this landmark status.
Thank you.
My name is Samuel Brown. I'm living 222, East and Barsham, in the city of South Bend. I echo holy sentiments very much because I come along at a real tough time, and I know what it is, we're discriminated against because of my marriage of 47 years. A treaty needs to be passed, and we need to have this own record where we can dial out where we came from and where we at now. I mean, I'm very passionate about this, and I think we talk a lot about it because I don't want to show my no tears, but this needs to be done. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Blairum. I reside in 913 East Washington Street in South Bend. I'm the founder and host of the Porche Den that happens every fourth Sunday of the month at the Civil Rights Heritage Center. The Porche Den is a place where people of all cultures and race, ethnic groups, gender, age, religion come together and they share the spoken word. Some Polish poets, some published poets, some folks that find their voice for the very first time, and an audience that is attentive and supportive. The Porche Den fosters an inclusive environment, and I feel there's no coincidence that it has partnered with a building that is now being used as a place for all people. We, I've always been taught that iron sharpens iron, right? And I feel like the Civil Rights Heritage Center does that for the Porche Den through the vision that we both share. I'm humbled and grateful every time we are able to occupy a space where unity is valued and important. I speak on behalf of the Porche Den when I say we are very much in support of the Civil Rights Heritage Center being recognized as a historical site. Thank you.
Would anybody like to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Move back to the council. What's your pleasure?
Comments?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We'll take comments now from anyone?
Yeah. I think this is a great honor for us to vote on this tonight. I'd like to thank those, our historical groups there. I like the passion you all have. I'm glad we have you all now within our city. I like that, that you really took charge with this and you led the efforts to get this done, because this is something that we need. We need to preserve all of our history, and especially these kind of moments in the day of today when we see everything that's going on, we just celebrate it. The yesterday was celebration of Charlottesville, the challenge, or the honor of it, which we, you know, it's hard to celebrate that, but at least memorialize it. And it's a wake-up call, what we're going on in our country. And we can look back at how far this city has come, and we have more to come, but it gives us a chance to come over there, see what the history is, and reflect on what we have come, where we have come, and where we need to go. So it's truly an honor. I want to also thank one of our council persons, who was a good part in the initial stages of that, is Councilwoman White. You see her name on that wall there because she, her role at IU SB took the time to really push that issue. And she doesn't always speak out like that. She speaks behind the wheel, and she gets things done. You see her name throughout the city, and she speaks with a powerful voice behind the city. So I want to thank you for the efforts that you did over there. Sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Someone indicated to me that I am a persistent choir pusher. I can recall in 1999, as a member of the South Bend Common Council, as a member of the South Bend, Indiana University of South Bend community, that a group of us began to work with not only the mayor at that time, Mayor Steve Licky, local citizens, and members of the South Bend Heritage Foundation, to begin to identify dollars to renovate at that time the nadorium. A lot of discussion, you know, both pro and con in regards to whether or not those resources should have been identified to renovate at that time the nadorium, which is now the South Bend Civil Rights Heritage Center. It was the right thing to do then, and if we were to present itself today, it would be the right thing to do now. I stand amazed to see the level and the quality of the work and the programs that are coming out of the nadorium. It is a heart, as someone has mentioned, to have those difficult conversations and to debate and come out with what's best for the community. So again, I am very appreciative. It's an honor for me to support this bill, and I look forward to greater things coming out on the Civil Rights Heritage Center. I think everyone who has had a part and taken to this current status, indeed, it is a legacy not only for our community but for our children. Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah. I just want to say, George, when you were talking, I started grinning because if you think back to the original founders of that and the board and what they were about, it just makes me smile what it's about now, and we're making it a historic landmark as what it is today. You know, I'd love for them to see it today, to be honest. So thank you for, you and Darryl, for your comments.
Just want to just quickly say, thank you for the history lesson on the fact that make this a historic landmark. It's clearly long overdue, and I don't want to forget to mention that I believe that we're moving to this place at this time with this designation largely because of what the two of you gentlemen, George Garner, Darryl Heller, have done to really make the Civil Rights Heritage Center what it is today, what we've said, the programming that's coming out of there, the education, the opportunity to connect all people in this community with respect to everyone's civil rights. You've just done an amazing, tremendous job, and so this is really a testament to what you two have done and who you are. So thank you.
See no other comments? Is there a motion from the council? Submove?
Why are you moving? Moving to...
Motion for passage. I mean for favorable recommendations.
There you go.
Oh, gosh. Favorable.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. And again, motion to rise and resolve from the committee's own.
All those in favor? Any one opposed? Motion carries.
Full council is now back in session. I will entertain a motion to hear third reading on 2618. Submove? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Karima Fowler, would you please give third reading to 2618?
2618?
Yes. For those in the audience, it is off the third agenda for third reading because typically what we do is we hear the fiscal plan first for the chocolate factory and then hear the zoning. You cannot pass the zoning until you hear the fiscal plan, which resolutions are usually after the bills. So what we did, suspend the rules to move up the timeframe, heard the resolutions first, so we can get everything done for chocolate factory today versus coming back in two weeks. So that's why it wasn't with the third reading. By doing the motion, we can now hear it. Don't make me repeat that. I understand. So Ms. Fowler, third reading on 2618. Committee to hold, very first one.
Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, annexing and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in German Township, contiguous therewith, Councilman District Number One, for 24632, 24650, 24700, 24762, 24810, 24820, US Highway 20, and 54270, Pine Road, South Bend, Indiana.
Motion for passage.
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McRide?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschke?
Aye.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Nine Aye.
Thank you. 3318, please.
3318, Third Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance and establishing historical landmark status for the structure and real property known as the Civil Rights Heritage Center, formerly the Engleman Nadorium, and located at 1040 West Washington Street in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McRide?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschke?
Aye.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine Aye.
Thank you. Let's move to first readings. 3318, Ms. Fowler.
3418, First Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, annexing and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in Portis Township, contiguous therewith, Councilman District Six, for a 207.5 acre tract of land on the west side of Energy Drive approximately 350 feet north of State Road 23, South Bend, Indiana.
I move that this be forwarded to the Area Plan Commission for their meeting on 918 and refer to the Zoning and Annexation Committee for our meeting on 108.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 3518.
3518, First Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, annexing and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in Portis Township, contiguous therewith, Councilman District Number Six, for a 229 acre tract of land north of the St. Joseph Valley Park right-of-way approximately 1150 feet from the intersection of State Road 23 and the St. Joseph Valley Parkway, South Bend, Indiana.
Same motion, referred to the Area Plan Commission for their meeting on 918, and back to us, assigned to the Zoning and Annexation Committee on 108.
Second.
410. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 3618, please.
3618, First Hearing on an Ordinance and Amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1939 and 1947 Charleston, Councilman District Number Four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Can I entertain a motion to accept the substitution? It's a scrivener's error from District One to District Four. Submove? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now can I have a motion on the sub? This would also be sent to the Area Plan Commission for their meeting on 918, and the Zoning and Annexation Committee for our meeting on 108.
Right.
Correct.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 3718, please.
3718, First Hearing on an Ordinance initiated by the Area Plan Commission of the St. Joseph County, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of South Bend Municipal Code, Article 14, subdivisions to delete certain lots, lot design standards that duplicate lot size standards in the zoning ordinance, and delete flood plan definitions that have been updated in the zoning ordinance.
I move that this be sent to the Zoning and Annexation Committee and set for our meeting on the 24th. And, yeah.
APC?
ApC.
Would you like to do something with that?
Not again.
I didn't write that down. You want to send it to the Area Plan Commission for their meeting on probably 98? 18. Yeah.
September meeting of the Area Plan Commission.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Unfinished business.
Make the motion to send 1840 to ZNA on 827.
Perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is there any new business?
Yes, just clarify again how we set up the meetings with the different partners from the airport and...
I will get back to you this week.
Okay.
Probably by Friday.
Yeah, cool. All right.
All right. Any other new business?
Yes, Jake, Transpo.
Announced.
He's announced that he's on drunk time.
Oh, Jake Teschke is now on Transpo. Welcome. All right. As a council appointee, Republican, which we have to do. Any other new business? Ms. White?
Yes, I would like to make an announcement and hopefully we can have more public input and citizen participation. We will have our third budget hearing this coming Wednesday. By 5:00 PM, we'll be in the council conference room, and at that time, the department that will be presenting is Public Works.
Thank you.
That information should be hopefully on tomorrow on our website.
Councilperson Joe Broden.
Thanks. I just accepted chairmanship of the Southwest Management District Board today.
Congratulations.
Love you. Thanks, everyone. And we are in the process of contract negotiations. And also, of course, the budget for Southwest Management District, which not only encompasses recycling, but also household hazardous waste. So those meetings are up and coming. Additionally, the flood meeting, the report out on the Lawson Fisher is, I believe, the 20th. I'm sorry, I should have referenced the 20th. Is it the 20th? We can correct that. I believe it's the 20th. Starting at 5:15.
Okay. Good. Any other new business? Anything the attorney or clerk would like to share with us? Okay. We will turn the privilege of the floor. This is where citizens have a right to come talk to the common council. They're given three minutes each. Total time period for this portion is 30 minutes. You cannot talk about anything that was on the agenda tonight or was discussed tonight. And with that, Sue, go ahead, state the name and address and begin.
Detective, I'm forward to two Kennedy. I'd like to remind the council that bonds equal credit cards when you're thinking of budgeting. For example, not-so-smart streets will borrow $34,278,000, and only will get to its $21,825,000. So that's $12,28,837 in interest. The taxpayer is going to be paying on that till 2037, and that account currently shows a deficit of $2.1 million. I don't know why, but I'd like to know. It also means that $1.7 million in payments is made every year until 2037. So when you do a bond, you're tying up a lot of cash and paying a lot of interest. I'd also like to bring to your attention, page 51, the approved budget on 2018, it says in 2017, $441,274,000 was spent on the budget, but it was, there's a deficit of $62,598,68. The cash balance went from $234,000 down to $215,000. That's cause for concern. In 2018, the budget was approved for $387,210,843. It has a deficit of $63,028,220. So for two years in a row, there's been a deficit of over $60 million. That's frightening to me. The cash balance in 2015 was $239,000. The cash balance in 2018 is $152,000. We need those cash reserves. We need you guys to do a budget that's not overspending by $60 million every year. And we need you to stop doing bonds, tying up things for multi-decades. I really find this concerning and there were, you know, for 10 years, there was $6.5 billion spent in tip money. So don't whine about how there wasn't $330 million to do sewers.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
And there was $800 million in 10 years per bayonet. So don't complain to the county auditor when she raises property taxes.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Samuel Brown, 222 East of Barstow, City South Bend. I'd like to share about San Luis. I went on a bus tour in the second district, uh, service. It's been really enlightening, the things I've seen, things I've heard. We also went by my grandmother's house. And we was traveling over by my grandmother's house, I've been friends with for 10 years. Uh, my daughter was down on in California by the house. I was in the grandmother's house, she came out, she did a little play catch. Right in front of the bus and everybody looking at my man doing his job. He had a mind of a brister, don't be fooled. Well, I think I'm sorry. But the thing that disturbed me, uh, my daughter Jasmine, a very intelligent child. She got it from my mother, not from my dad. Her mother took her to the main stage post office, that big building down there. It was a grievance. Lucy come home and said, "Julia dropped a grievance." She said, "But I'm going to fight on. We need resources for my family." I said, "I'm all in." She won the grievance, got $1,500,000 at Christmas time. Moving on from that, Jasmine went home and she was so hurt that a council member felt like she was attacking her. She was saying something. I've been doing this for how many years now? Been talking about my grandmother? Okay. Finally got to see they ever do anything. And I called my baby crying. I said, "Well, nobody beat you now. Cause they ain't gonna be out." She's really intelligent, her daughter's intelligent, I'm semi-intelligent. And we're all a family. We're not going to let your grandmother beat us. We come together as a family. We had gushed out. My dad got a letter from my daughter. Tasha got a letter from my daughter. Don't worry about the Browns. The Browns are all right. Do what you do, bro. Catching my child is not the thing to do. Not as long as I'm breathing.
30 seconds.
She's a remarkable lady. She got a lot of fight in her and we're going to use all our resources. From the little baby out in New Orleans to my son in Kokomo, we the Browns, only thing to do is bring us closer. Without walking the road, remember one thing, we are fighters. Thank you for listening to me. We're going to get your grandmother's things here. There's no money to embrace her under the guy's leg, we're going to take care of her. It don't work.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Ron Packer, 122 East Hope Avenue Street, South Bend. There was one, what I consider to be a very important factor that was not discussed, which is why I am bringing it up now, concerning the expansion of the South Shore Railway.
Sir, it was part of the agenda, you can't talk about it tonight. A privilege of the floor.
Okay, may I ask, when would I be able to bring this up?
Two weeks from now. Or you can, you can talk to council members too, individually.
Okay, because it was something that was not discussed tonight, turning that up.
Yep. All right, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Jason Beniki-Krichlow, 38, 22 West Ford Street. I'm not going to talk about what was talked about tonight, but I'm going to use it to start a conversation. Because it was talked about as a once-in-a-generation project. And, you know, last year we were talking about a once-in-a-generation project with park bonds. And in my lifetime, we've talked about a lot of once-in-a-generation projects in this city that have put us in debt. Most recently, one we finally paid our last million-plus dollars on was the Hall of Fame last year, or this year, I can't remember when we finally made the last payment on it, after the long left town. And while we keep paying all these bills and putting all these bonds out and building all this debt for these once-in-a-generation projects that we've been paying on for 30 or 40 years to get us to where we're going at. We're supposed to be a bike-friendly city, yet we don't sweep our streets on a regular basis anymore. I want to, I challenge anybody to drive down Western Avenue in one of those bike lanes on a bike where there's glass all through the bike lane, where there's pebbles and debris that is not bike-friendly, it is not bike-safe. And if you have to go down a side street or a main artery like Bendix Drive, where there is a little speed bump in the middle of Bendix Drive up by the airport, we're neglecting our basic duties to provide safe infrastructure. And we want to move towards a more bike-friendly and a more complete use of streets, that we need to put money back in the street sweeping. We need to be on a more than once every 75-year repaving plan for our roads. You know, I just moved back here from Bloomington after a year there. You know what their repaving pattern is? Once every 17 years. They run their street sweepers on every street once a week. They run them at night so it doesn't affect traffic. Guess what? It's probably the most bike-friendly city in this country, or right up there with probably Portland, Oregon. You know, and again, once every 17 years. And they do it with a lot less resources than the city of South Bend does. So that's my challenge for you guys come this budget season. Put our money where our mouth is. If we want to be bike-friendly, it means getting those street sweepers out there more than twice a year. It means repaving roads more than once every 75 years. Let's make these streets complete and usable for everybody.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Sharon Beniki, 38, 22 Ford Street. I just want to say I was included on that bus trip and Regina, thank you for inviting me. It was an honor and a privilege. I'm sure some of the people on the bus were shocked to see firsthand drug deals. Unfortunately, on the west side, we see it all too often. I hope that those who aren't used to witnessing a firsthand take it and realize that we do have a drug problem on the streets, in the neighborhoods. And, you know, put your money where your mouth is, public safety, whatever it takes to, if it's one house at a time, then it's one house at a time. Which also brings me to the last time I spoke and I was talking about the drive-through drug dealer in my neighborhood. Couple days later, South Bend police went in, raided four houses within that neighborhood and all of a sudden, all my problems gone. It's gone for me, but I'm sure they're going to be opening up somewhere else. But I want to thank the South Bend Police Department for doing what they do and Regina for the bus trip and for the council members. They seem to be growing by leaps and bounds. The citizens love the bus trips. You may end up getting two or three buses instead of just one. You can handle it, Tim.
Convent.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, Joe Broden, you want to make your announcement about your joint meeting with Jake Teschka?
Yes, right, right day, the 20th, however, at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So that'll be the Lawson Fisher Study on Flooding Sewer Issues.
Okay.
And it is a joint utilities meeting.
Utilities on the health and health. Okay, great. Entertained motion adjourned?
Some move?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Where's yours? Too slow. Regina?